I'll make a motion to accept the minutes of February twenty fourth.
All in favor? March second meeting. Did anybody have a chance to look at the March second meeting?
I didn't. I'll make a motion to accept the minutes of March fourth submitted.
March second.
I mean, March second.
I'll second. All in favor? I make a motion that we accept payroll warrant number nineteen in the amount of nine thousand five hundred eighty-two dollars and fifty-seven cents.
I'll second that.
All in favor? I make a motion, we accept a counts payable warrant number nineteen in the amount of two hundred and twelve thousand six hundred and twenty-seven dollars and eighty-two cents.
I'll second that.
All in favor? Can I have that folder there? Pull those papers? Brad? You. What you got? Nothing?
Blood season.
Yeah. Definitely.
Uh, did you see where I put it for the? For dear ago concrete? For the Mary Turner Bridge?
See where? Where did you put it in?
Right in there.
It was in with the bills.
Right in there.
If the weather keeps going the way it is, we should be able to complete that the second or third week of April.
Have you been in touch with DOT to cancel that agreement?
Have you been in touch with DOT to cancel the agreement with them?
No, 'cause my name's nowhere on that agreement.
Uh-oh.
Nowhere on that agreement. That was BB before Brett.
That's up to us then, guys. That's, um... So, what you've put in is? Is that gonna fix the whole thing, or is that...
That's gonna cover the whole thing and guardrails.
Okay. What's the amount, please? Hold on. Grand total of thirty thousand two hundred dollars.
And what was in the account? Sitting now? We have twenty-five something?
It's twenty-four something plus we have twenty-something in the other account. Actually, twenty-two four seventy-five came out of Mary Turner Bridge. And then seven thousand seven hundred twenty-five came out of the bridge account. That's it. Anybody on the board have anything for Brad?
Roads are getting muddy.
Yes, they are. We're finding new holes in deep rocks every day.
Yeah, I thought I was mud running back in the afternoon.
Sorry?
It's mud running out there now.
Oh, yeah.
Getting pretty decent places.
Now, we could use a few days of sun and wind.
It'll help.
Anybody else? All right, I'm gonna open it up to public participation for Brad. This is the only opportunity tonight that you're gonna have a chance to say anything to do with Brad or the road crew. That's it. Public participation at the end is gonna have nothing to do with any of them. So if you've got something to do with the roads or Brad is to be said now. All right. Looks like you're good. Did you raise your hand? Okay.
Have a good night.
You too.
Thank you.
Do I still have one somewhere? It was there, I think. Is it underneath? I think that it is. Nope. All right. Tax collector memo. Do I have a memo? Yeah.
You didn't give me one. Sorry.
I don't think we have a memo.
She already gave me one. I guess she doesn't.
So, nothing from Debbie. Um, nothing from Constantine. Although tomorrow night, the, uh, school board is presenting some of their budgets.
Did we get that letter from him in the mail?
I didn't get one. I got a copy of it. I could read it, but I didn't get one.
Read it and you're asking.
It was very interesting.
Yes, it is.
I felt very...
Post office boxes, do you have a mailbox?
I know Dickie paid for them in post office boxes.
That's why people would not with the post office boxes being there.
It's unfortunate that we have somebody else presenting us from Peru on the school board, right? And they wouldn't sign with him and that's unfortunate to see that.
Are you talking about me?
I have a copy here. Do you want it?
Or just didn't sign through the post office?
They would deliver it in the box.
Rural boxes. They had posters on the back.
Had posters on it?
Yeah.
They were printed on the back.
Yeah, they were. The posters on the back, they were great.
He paid us pay.
Yeah. She was talking about.
The first time he did it wasn't, I think since then.
The last few.
The last two were posters.
That's the way they do it when it's bulk mailing. That's the way you do it when it's bulk mailing.
Yeah. Well, why didn't post office people get it then?
You can, is that an EDDM? Does it say EDDM on? Uh, no, CCR, no. Yeah, EDDM. EDDM, you can pay by area. Or you can pay by rural route. Or by post office box. Or any combination. Like, big cities, you can pay by areas. Or zip codes.
Streets or whatever.
Well, however, yeah. You can do it, uh, demographically, too. So, you probably didn't pay to have them...
In the box.
Post office box.
I'm sorry, the trickle's bad.
I don't know why, but there's not that much difference.
You figured the word would get out.
Yeah. All right, I've got nothing new from the fire sheet. All right, Sandy, we're already up to you.
Yeah. And the only thing I really have is, I've just been working, working, working.
Getting out.
Assessing and...
Yeah.
Helping with abatement and supplements and figuring them all out. And, um, on that, yours will be done next week. I couldn't get it in tonight. I just couldn't get all the numbers to work. So, it'll be, it'll be next week.
Now, has Todd's been done?
It's because it's a combination, you know, how they, the fifty-seven E had both your names on it and it wasn't supposed to.
Right.
Um, she's doing both of them at the same time. So, it's, um, basically with, with yours, it's just a, a basic abatement and supplement and...
It's a lot.
And that's it. It's a little different with his, where it's already, he's already been abated for the, uh, home stay exemption not being on there and it was supposed to be on there. Um, so it's, it'll be done next week. I just wanted to let you know that you're still in there.
Thanks, Sandy.
You're welcome.
That's it.
You can come and sit, you know. I have lots to tell you, but right now, it's like... No.
All right, nothing from animal control. Doesn't look like anything from the committee reports. Nothing new from the planning board. Well, look at that. Incoming correspondence, we have something from Maine Welfare Directors Association that Sandy would like to attend. Did you ever find out if we have money in training still? Do we have enough money for it? We do? I don't see why she couldn't go. All right.
Do you need a motion for that?
Yeah. It's a Monday and Tuesday.
I'll make a motion that Sandy attend the Maine Welfare Association meeting on Monday and Tuesday, April twenty-seventh.
All right, any more discussion? All in favor? Wendy?
Yes. On my seven oh six form, what is actually considered, um, personal property?
This kid up in the five long tractor. Larry Snow will be allowed in. She has to be on there.
Four wheeler.
The four wheeler. I mean, the four wheeler, that doesn't have to be on there. Nobody puts out that.
Oh, okay. Um, 'cause I did sell, I thought I filled out another seven oh six form that I had, that we had sold the five long tractor.
You sold the five long tractor?
I don't have that anymore. Sold it, I'm pretty sure a couple of years ago. I thought I filled out another seven oh six saying that if we didn't have it anymore.
I got the copy of it, this one here.
Yeah.
Fill out five, seven, seventeen.
Well, there would have been a new one just last year.
There would have been a new one and I didn't know.
You know what happened to some of those, just like the rest of us do? They disappear. Somebody had them, the last ones that were made out, we haven't got half of them back. I know that for a fact. Because they, they went with her, she had them at one time, and we didn't get them all back. Because they back here, she said, either they had to the cabinet box. And I started going through and putting some of them away. They weren't all there. So, what can you do about that?
Shouldn't have left. Yeah, that needs to come off. So, what do I see about that? The select board or the assessors, who takes care of that?
I mean, I guess fill out another one and, I mean, if you have, because this is current.
It would only, it would only impact the most current tax year.
Right.
So, what happens with, I thought there was a glitch when it went back to two thousand and eleven.
No, there was no glitch, 'cause we, I have, after that meeting, I had to pull a lot of other people. For whatever reason, it just so happened that it was the few people in this room that had personal property that had issues. There were a lot that their bills were paid, so there was no glitch. So...
Glitch, 'cause, 'cause it was these people. Something was wrong.
No. The, the money that shows is the money that's owed.
So you're saying Dicky Powells and Wendy's and, um, Linda's are all back to two thousand and eleven?
Yes, because other account, and most of the other accounts are zero, so there's not, there was no obvious glitch that would say there was something wrong with personal property. Because I expected every account that we pulled to be the same situation, and it wasn't. So, if you paid that, then I would say, if you have records, then I would say bring them in, because if you can prove that you paid, she's gonna have to take it off. But other than that, I don't know what to say.
And another thing, I would bring up those slips that she rips off, the little receipts. A lot of times, those fade. And my accountant last year said it's because of the ink that's being used. 'Cause I've got, I've come across slips that just barely, barely can make out.
Out of her mach, out of her machine that she prints with?
Yeah.
One thing, if you, if you paid by check, you should be able to get a copy of the check or something. If you paid by check, you could go back and get a copy of it. If you paid by check.
Yeah, but Larry, we've had older people that come in and pay cash, and then their receipts fade and...
Oh, I know, but you come pay taxes, I always pay check, not cash.
A lot of people do pay cash.
Yeah, I've seen people pay ca, like seven or eight hundred dollars in cash, and it's like, whoa.
Yeah.
I, if that receipt fades, and it's not put in the computer correctly, or something happens, and...
Yeah. So, I guess, as far as going back that far, you're gonna have to see if you've got records of some kind. And that's gonna be, that's gonna be the answer to everybody, that, anybody that comes in, they're gonna have to go back and find their receipts, or go to the bank, or... 'Cause there's no glitch.
And it was all personal property, right?
Yeah.
I would think, Wendy, that those would be in your tax records, in your, in your tax book, but for each year, with that associated with your business.
Um, I don't know anything about business kind of stuff.
Carol, do they mind getting taken care of?
I don't know.
But I handed it to you and it was supposed to be.
I don't know.
I just don't want it coming back, because it's depreciated under five thousand dollars, so I don't wanna, it's like...
I wasn't here Fri, I didn't come in Friday, I was...
No, 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 but remember when I handed it to you, it was supposed to, was that taken care of?
I know it was sent to Leanne. Um, I know she's been working on the abatement and, and the supplements and...
I haven't seen anything with that name come across yet.
I don't know about the person.
Yeah, she said she's gonna, she's busy all the time. Anything else?
So, is the next seven oh six forms coming out or have to be in, or...
One was not sent out this year. Does she mean nineteen? Twenty.
Twenty. But, well, they were some sent out in eighteen, right?
I got one.
No. Eighteen was sent out, nineteen was not sent out.
Eighteen, and this is, this is dated May seventh of seventeen.
Yeah, that's why, like I said, they didn't receive the seven oh six form, because if they did, they'd see that it had depreciated.
Shirley Bartlett, let's see, Shirley, let me just try to go over this in my head. Shirley Bartlett quit in December of seventeen.
No.
Wow.
Eighteen?
Yeah.
Summer of eighteen?
Right.
Okay. Um, yeah, nine went out in nineteen.
They went out in, uh, eighteen.
Yep.
But we don't have any things.
We have some.
Some people don't have eighteen.
'Cause like I said, those were the, Shirley had, she had those.
Hold on.
Yep. So, can this be sent to Leanne for an adjustment?
I have no idea. I think that the adjustment can only be for one year.
That's what, that's what they've been doing to everything.
Because, because the individual, because the individual's responsible for, for notifying the town in a timely manner if they're being assessed for property or for equipment that they no longer own. And so, the only way it goes back three years, it, I mean, there's really strict criteria and it doesn't apply to most instances.
I meant for the next tax year. So it doesn't come up again. How does she take care of that?
Well, I mean, if we have information that removes equipment for the upcoming, for the, yeah, the upcoming tax year, then it could be removed from that.
What, do you need a bill of sale?
No, all we need is, this is a certified copy that attests to the validity of the information.
So she should fill out a new one.
I don't know why, we have this one.
But this one's not. Two of those have to come off.
Well, two of them have to come off, and, yeah.
So fill out a new one.
Although we don't have any revised ones to give her.
Why, I'm, I'm wondering how that can happen.
I'm gonna just a letter. Say, hey, I don't want this anymore.
Wait. Of what, seven, you don't have any, what, seven oh six forms?
Right.
On the computer.
Yep. They are on the computer. It could be generated with a change in the revision date.
Sure.
But it should only be changed with the assessor's, um, review and approval.
So, when is the assessor coming again?
I don't know.
She was just here Friday.
She, she, as far as I know, she's only gonna be in once a month.
But could she review it sent digitally? You know, I don't know when you'd have to meet with her.
No, Wendy just has to meet with her. I could send it to her.
Yeah.
She had actually come in and wanted to talk with her, and Karen was with her, and, um, so we went off and we talked for a bit and came back and, um... We figured we could figure it out that way, um, so she didn't actually get to see me in. So, I'll just make sure...
Okay.
That it gets to her.
But mine was, mine was over a month ago, and I wrote across it that this has depreciated and it was given to the board.
And it's been sent, and you heard that it's been sent to the assessor.
She has it.
Okay, so that should be good enough, if I...
Yeah, and I don't know why Wendy couldn't do this. Wendy, I don't know why you couldn't do the same thing. Take a copy of this and indicate the date of the sale or whatever, and sign and date it. And provide that as a doc, documentation. You can have to write a letter.
Okay.
I mean, if I, I'm not the assessor, but if I were looking at that and someone said to me, you know, highlighted the amount and said, "The equipment was sold on such and such a date, I no longer possess this," then I would consider that a valid document to determine whether or not, um, you know, a refund or, um, an abatement or a change in the personal property documentation for the town, the sufficient. That way, there's some documentation and a signature and a date. Kathy's hands have been up for a while.
Been tired.
Oh, that's fine. Um, and you, the, the thing that you're saying is fading. Is that the tax bill or the receipt?
The receipt. When she rips off the little receipt.
Yeah, I don't, I think you'll find that everywhere, because all the receipts and stuff I've got from building our house, you look back on them, like for Lowe's and Home Depot and all, they're all, you can't read any of them, and I almost think it's the paper, not the, not the name.
It is the paper. But you can get the, the non-fake paper, so...
Okay, so Wendy, are you satisfied for the moment? Yeah. All right, let's move on. We got some home stay exemptions. Property tax exemptions, abatement.
Is this something you worked on that I should have?
No, I don't know, I thought it was yours, that's why I put it over there.
Okay, well, I'll keep it. I think it may be something that the Sallies were working on.
And that could be. I just didn't, it wasn't mine, and I thought, well, if it belonged to anybody else, it would be you. Yeah.
'Cause it had numbers on it.
That's right. All right, Linda said she needed to look at this one.
Is it a different sort of question?
Yeah.
Why did I get rid of that one?
'Cause she said she understand it better than she does.
Well, I know the record, I mean, yeah, I, I know it's, I know it's eligible.
Well, I just didn't know about the years and all of that.
It should be on the back of the form.
He went in during...
He retired out of the guy.
He went in during the Vietnam War.
You have to watch the dates, though, 'cause there's odd dates.
It said between a certain time and...
It, his fell in that.
Why he didn't apply for it a long time ago, I didn't know.
He should have, I don't worry about it.
Yeah.
But she was in the baby, it looks very old color to two fourteen, uh, two fourteen N.
All right, I have some motions up there.
My motion is to accept Richard Allen's, uh, Spencer Brock's tax exemption, that, seven lot, eight A.
I'll second that. All in favor?
And I'll make a motion that we approve home stay exemption for Bruce and Paula Hadden. Lot, uh, Matt A, lot thirteen C, six thirty-one Greenwood Road.
I'll second that. All in favor?
Me and I just, it's different from the farm. Thirty-seven Alvin Road.
So at this point, the home stays for that year...
That should be on the line.
Twenty twenty-one?
Yeah. I'll make a motion to accept Randy F. Child's home stay exemption, thirty-seven Alvin Road, Matt twenty-nine, lot sixty A.
All right. I'll second that. All in favor? Okay, that's those.
I have one. I move that the application for abatement of property tax taxes submitted by Andrew and Diane Shory for property located at two eighty-three East Shore Road, map and lot twenty-two dash eighteen. The be approved for the tax year two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty. Wait a minute, they're asking for eighteen, nineteen.
Yeah, for twenty nineteen, for this year. They had submitted it before in March of twenty eighteen, which should have, um, should have made them eligible for last year's.
The letter doesn't say that it was, that they submitted it in eighteen, it says that they submitted it on March eighteenth, two thousand nineteen.
Well, the, on the side of the thing, when she came in, she said it was two thousand eighteen. It said it on the, it's on the side of the...
Well, she's, yeah, but she gave us a, unless you pulled it out, the copy of the letter that we sent to her, telling her that the board had approved their application, is dated March twenty-two, two thousand nineteen. And it says that the home stay property tax exemption is for the tax, upcoming tax year, two thousand nineteen, twenty.
She said she submitted it before, and she showed me the paper that said twenty eighteen, and I...
Well, I don't see, there's nothing here that says that it was twenty eighteen. Where, whatever she showed you, you didn't get a copy of, but it's not attached to this.
Yeah, it was written on the side of the...
Just be, just because it's, it was submitted, she said it was originally submitted two thousand eighteen, but what we have here, Sandy, is a document, is a letter, that... But what we have here, Sandy, is a document, is a letter that the board sent out in two thousand nineteen. Unless it's a letter or, or documentation from the select board minutes that show that it was submitted in eighteen. Then what the, the, the property tax adjustment for two thousand eighteen, nineteen is correct.
Okay.
I'd like to table this one pending more.
Yep.
Uh, research and documentation.
Okay.
So my motion is to table the application for abatement submitted by Andrew and Diane Shory for tax year two thousand eighteen, nineteen be tabled pending more research.
I'll second that.
All in favor? And I'm gonna return this to you.
Yes.
Excuse me, Linda. I think there's confusion on the part of citizens of when they submit, when they submit the exemption request, what the effective date is of it. There's no documentation in that.
I saw the letter, that's why I tapped it all together.
And the letter is dated March nineteen, two thousand nineteen, not two thousand eighteen.
Right, but she said that she had submitted it before. You know, like.
Well, then where's the documentation if she had it?
The only thing, the only thing she had was the thing saying on the side for two thousand eighteen.
Well, at this point, anybody can come in and say that because of the mess that. Okay, I'll make a motion on one of these. Make a motion on an abatement of property taxes for Edmund Berry, map fifteen, lot nineteen. It's saying that the ownership did not reflect in seventeen or eighteen tax commitments. And so he's looking for both seventeen and eighteen to come back.
I have a supplemental sale.
Yeah, that's what I see here too. It's a supplemental bill, not an abatement.
Right.
Yeah. That was my question.
Yeah, it says right on mine, it says abatement.
I know, but it's. It says supplemental bill right here, reason for supplemental bill. Total of the supplemental bill is two hundred and seventy-three dollars and fifty-eight cents.
That's what the legal says on the.
Abatement.
Okay.
The beginning part is right.
Edmund Berry. Okay, so she just, supplemental bills shouldn't be there, it should be abatements.
Right.
Let's see, I'll need to say supplemented, yeah, your supplemental tax.
Yeah, where the abatement is for the abatement is for Edmund Berry, map fifteen, lot nineteen, reason for the abatement. Just when I went back to write the amount.
Yep.
I accidentally put supplemental.
That's, that's fine. Everybody makes mistakes. So. Was that your motion? Did you say abatement?
I did, okay.
Did anybody say it?
Nope.
I'll second it. All in favor? Okay.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve supplemental tax for Clint Bradbury. Two hundred and seventy-three dollars and fifty-eight cents, map fifteen, lot nineteen. And the supplemented value was six thousand nine hundred dollars.
Wow, I have two hundred and seventy-three dollars and fifty-eight cents.
Yep, so do I.
Me too.
Yeah, that's what the tax is. But I said.
Oh, the value.
The value was six thousand nine hundred. The supplemental tax is two seventy-three fifty-eight.
Okay.
Yes, you did.
I'm not sure we're all on the right page here or even in the right book.
Yeah. We hung together pretty well till we hit this.
Yeah. Okay.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Good lord. I have another one.
Seconding that?
Um, I did. I have another one for Clint Bradbury, lot fifteen, I mean, map fifteen, lot forty-four. And is it even on here?
No. Okay, keep going.
Tree growth issue. This is a parcel of land that should have been enrolled in tree growth for two thousand nineteen tax commitment. The application was not given to me until after commitment. Once I received the tree growth application, an abatement was granted based on the original tree growth application.
So this is a supplemental bill?
I'm assuming that's what that is and.
It's a supplemental.
Like the tax reduction of three hundred and nineteen dollars and six cents.
How come it's on the abatement form?
What does it say?
If it's a.
It's an abatement.
I didn't do it.
Okay, is it an abatement or is it a supplemental bill? I don't know, it's on the abatement form.
This one's supplemental.
That is what she said.
This, well, this is.
This is what she said.
But this isn't the tree growth, she's got the tree growth.
Well, be, this was two thousand nineteen. It says abatement.
So it's an abatement for tree growth?
She filled out, she filled out that one.
Who's she?
Leanne Sally.
Leanne Sally.
And I, I take this and put it on the agenda.
And it says, this is not an additional abatement beyond the first abatement.
Well, then it's an abatement, if this is not an additional abatement beyond the first one, then it's an abatement.
Do I have a second?
No, I don't know what we're voting on.
We're voting, we're deciding.
I think we need to table that one as well.
This abatement reflects the change in value from the original committed value to the corrected tree growth value. This is not an additional abatement beyond the first abatement. So she's saying the first abatement she gave was incorrect. So this isn't, this isn't an additional one, this is just to fix the first one.
Just to fix the numbers.
Right. Because she had the wrong numbers.
Yeah.
Do you mean one that was done a di, on a di, a different day?
Yeah, Clint, Clint came in, what was it, three weeks ago, he was on for an abatement, I think it was about three weeks ago.
Yeah, it was.
There was one in there for Clint, I think that's what they were referring to. I'll, I'll see if I can find it. If you guys want me to.
Right, that's right. Clint came in, wasn't happy, that's, I remember this now. He wasn't happy with the amount that she gave. So she went back and looked at it and she's giving additional that she feels like she should have gave the first time. So you made a motion to accept this. Alright, I'll second it. Cause I remember this. All in favor? Alright.
Opposed?
No.
I'm saying.
Yeah, me.
I don't blame you, cause I'm confused.
No, I remember this.
You just said it wasn't, wasn't additional and then the next week you said it was.
Really, right?
Yes.
So would the.
Alright, we still have some more out there. Larry, have you got something? Hey, go ahead.
This is for Robert Libby. Lot five, I mean, yeah, that five lot six, yeah, oh, six A. That was map ten, lot oh five and oh six A, two lots, okay? And it's tax supplemented. Mr. Libby had deeded off four point seven three classified acres from tree growth. Classification to his daughter Tiffany. The results in the pasture where they're no longer qualified to be classified as true berry, true growth land. A penalty in this amount is due, one thousand three hundred and thirty-three dollars and seventy-five cents.
Alright, I'll second that. All in favor?
We still got another one. Do we have another one?
Yeah, I have um Jeff, Jeffrey Porter. And this is an abatement. Because of the condition of the house is unlivable. So she deducted it by fifty percent.
Should you make a motion to accept?
I make a motion, that was a motion.
I'll second that. All in favor? Alright, let's turn around. Alright, old business, benefits of elected officials. We've gotta iron this out. I'm getting asked. So we need, we need to. Iron out vacation time, sick time. Are they gonna fall under the personnel policy that we have for the other people? Is it different? Are they, can they, can they accumulate time, can they not? Larry asked me to print those out before the meeting. That's the information we got from MMA. It says that elected officials are not covered as employees under the personnel policy. Well, they don't say, it doesn't say specifically. It says that they are elected officials, they're not employees of the town. So based on his request, we copied the information from MMA.
Okay.
And that's fine, but we still need to come up with what we're gonna offer these elected officials. So if we wanna run that like we do, just we're gonna offer what we offer the ones, the other ones that are higher, or if it's gonna be different. Because we've gotta offer this something.
It's gotta stay the same, one thing, you got, the first, it's gotta be something different on the personnel policy. You got to stay there in the first level policy, right?
It doesn't have to be different, it just has to stay what it is.
Stay what it is, for the law.
For elected.
So you're saying that pending a revision of the personnel policy, that the individuals who were hired under that policy should be, should continue to be eligible?
Yes.
I thought that's what you were saying.
I don't think.
See how nice you said that?
Change anything, change anything at this point. I mean, they're elected officials, they get paid, I mean.
Well, isn't the hitch really the accumulation of time and whether they get paid out? That's what I think the real hitch is.
It's the overtime issue. If we wanna pay him overtime or not pay him overtime or increase their, or increase their salary to take care of you.
The benefits. I don't think that it should accumulate past a year. They don't take it within that year, then it's gone.
Okay, I, I can agree with you on vacation time. Sick time, I have a problem with doing away with sick time. Because, I mean, people will try to save their sick days.
Want to do away with it, but I don't think they should be able to accumulate it and.
A lot of places, you don't use your sick time in that year that you acquire it, you lose it.
You lose it. See, I've never worked in a place like that.
Yeah, if you don't, if you don't take the sick time that year, you lose it.
Yeah. You don't take your vacation time in that timeframe, you lose it. It doesn't care or you don't get paid out for it.
And what's the policy with our other, our full-time employees that accumulate vacation time?
Under the personnel policy. Under the personnel policy?
Uh huh.
I think that they're limited to carry forward two weeks vacation.
Yeah.
And, and if they leave, then they're entitled to a, to a um, a partial payout.
And they can accumulate thirty-six days when they can get paid out with that.
I thought it was.
It's crazy. Sorry.
Because, I mean, this was probably a long time ago, but when I worked at the hospital. I didn't ever have sick days and I wanted to accumulate all of my vacation pay as well, so I could get money. And not take a vacation and that, they told me that was illegal, I needed to take at least one week.
Do they go under statute?
That's what I was told.
Well, I might have given it that time.
We're talking about many years ago, but they said I have to leave the job.
Oh, you're not that.
So what? I have to leave the job for at least four weeks. I can't take that money and not take time off. Probably greedy, but I don't want to be out there, I was young, I ain't there.
Are you talking, what about, are you talking about car?
Charlie? Are you talking about me?
Car time.
No, she's, no.
Okay.
Vacation, sick days.
As far as vacation time, I think the vacation day should be the same as what everyone else has for the vacation days.
But not accumulate.
Vacation days, I'm sorry, don't mean vacation days, I meant holidays, holidays.
Okay, so Carol, yeah, so she's familiar with that personnel policy. How do they increase? Is it, is it steps, do they get so many weeks, so many years?
Yeah, it's six months to two years, they get a week, two years to seven years, they get another week. Seven years to fifteen, they get a third week and after fifteen years, they get a whole week. So in theory. An elected official, I mean, the road commissioner. Can only be eligible for two weeks vacation in a three-year term.
Oh, okay.
Okay, so what happens if he runs again?
It's a new term, it's a new three-year term.
See, I have an issue with that. I have an issue with treating them. I have an issue with elected officials being treated less equal than our other employees.
Okay, so they can accumulate that extra week. But they're not paid out if they leave. I, the issue is, right now, if you look at what can be paid out for benefits. It's a lot of money that can be paid out.
Yeah, it's over a thousand dollars.
For benefits.
If, if all three left now, it would be over a thousand dollars.
Oh, gosh, it's more than that.
No, he gave me a calculation.
Look, just look at, at, no. It, it's a lot more that. It's closer to about eight thousand dollars.
You count vacations with everything?
So the calculations he gave us on a payout.
Under the personnel policy, if Rick was to leave, you'll just use Rick. Does he get paid for all vacation time that he hasn't used?
No.
No.
Twenty-five percent of it.
Twenty-five percent?
Really? When I left the job, they, they had, our department labor might say something different. Because when I left the job, I had two weeks vacation coming to me, they refused to pay me. And I went to the department of labor, that's vacation earned, if they earn the vacation, they have to pay you. A hundred percent. Vacation earned, they can't refuse to pay you. And I got my pay. With the, the table in jail, you get paid.
I have no problem with vacation, I have a problem with accumulating sick days and then being able to carry those over and over and over. Yes, you certainly should have sick days, absolutely. But if you're fortunate and you're not sick that year. You know, but that's a.
See, and I just look at that differently because. Okay, okay, can we just look at the language in the personnel within the vacation policy?
What's the date of the personnel policy you're looking at?
Fifteenth, three thirty fifteen. Employees are encouraged to take the vacation, do them within the year that the vacation is earned. However, a maximum of forty hours may be carried over for fiscal year, non-accumulable. One cannot carry forty hours one year and carry another forty hours to the next, so that they are carrying eighty hours and it goes on and on.
So they're only allowed to go forty hours regardless of how many they have.
That's how I read this policy.
But it also reads that if they leave, that they, you have to pay them the vacation that they earned.
Right. If they earned it, say, if you had three weeks vacation this year and he's gonna leave, you got, you owe him three weeks paid vacation.
Yeah, I, yeah.
Yeah. Whatever they earn, they.
Yeah, but that's. Yeah, but that's employees.
That's employees, yes.
But I feel like our elected officials should be treated the same way.
Yeah, I do too.
They have added responsibility over the employees and I just can't justify treating them worse than.
No.
No. Kathy, I'll go right down the.
Um, if they're not employees, then that would mean that they're independent contractors.
No. They're elected officials. That's a different category. Okay.
Yeah, was your hand up? No, then I'll go the record.
When do you award them vacation time? In other words.
At first six months.
No, yeah, but when during each physical year, they get their vacations. Cause this is what the mill did. The mill changed it, we used to get ours ahead of time, you know, before we worked that year. And all of a sudden, in one fell swoop, the whole corporation, they, they changed it to, you don't get them until you work that entire year.
It's.
So what that meant is you, you lost all that when you retired. It took, it was like, worth millions of dollars to them in a big corporation like that. But I was just curious, so they awarded their vacations as soon as they hit that six months or whatever, they, then they.
They're eligible.
Eligible for two weeks vacation.
Yeah.
They don't have to work that entire physical year, right?
It's one week after the fir, for the first year.
Six to twelve months, it's one year. Six to twelve months, it's one year.
The policy is silent on when the application, the vacation will be applied. That's the answer to your question.
That's my question. Because it makes a difference.
I know.
On the payout.
I know.
The mill figured that out, because it was worth millions of dollars to them over the whole corporation. They figured that out, they did it like that.
Yeah, frankly, it should be that they earn so much per month. That's how the state contracts work.
I agree with that.
That's kinda what the mill ended up doing, to then work it to earn it, and work the time.
I can't talk about that. I haven't really worked with anyone since I was twenty-three. Didn't have any benefits.
I think there's issues in the personnel policy that needs to be addressed as well.
Well, that's been, that's been...
Been working on that, and so I think that would line up with some of the issues that we have for the elected officials as well.
So I have to ask a stupid question.
No questions stupid.
Because when Vera left, and this was the bane for a lot of people, we paid how much? We paid her several weeks vacation time, or a considerable amount of time. Could we have gotten around that with that personnel policy? Because was she able to roll things over that she shouldn't have? Or did, was she here so long that she'd accumulated so many weeks? You know, do you know what I'm trying to say?
I, I know what you're saying.
Most they get is four.
I'm just curious if we made a mistake with that.
Well, it's not a mistake when the voters vote for it, I guess.
Yeah, all right.
That would be another advantage to you, to make it so you accumulate your vacations from time to work. Because when I retired, they calculated mine, I didn't just get that whole, you know, my six weeks vacation for that year. When I retired in July, I got whatever portion I worked in. So it saves money.
The only thing this says is, on the year the employee being granted another week of vacation, the anniversary hire date will be the date used to prorate the calculation of this added vacation time. That was changed in two thousand eleven. But again, it doesn't, it doesn't grant vacation based on time worked.
I think we need to set a time to just set and work on this, there's a lot to it. And I don't think it's a decision that we can make tonight, you know, fifteen minutes.
And that's, and that's fine. But how do I answer the question to people that wanna run for road commissioner? What are your benefits for road commissioner?
Well, we're not taking health insurance away.
Okay, we're not?
We're not, I, I'm asking.
No, I, I can't.
I don't believe we should take that benefit off. I don't think we should take the benefits away. I just think we need to control how they are accumulated.
Well, I mean, to answer the question, you can, I mean, if we decide that the elected officials are going to be the same as the employees, however, they should know that that is going to be looked at and could change.
This policy says that the select board has the ability to change the policy as well.
Right.
I mean...
So the answer to somebody running is...
There's vacation time, there's holiday pay, there's insurance, I...
Right, as far as whoever's running for elected, we can just leave everything away, they're elected, and then we can, you know, hash this out after.
Well, they may not run if they don't get, if they won't for benefits.
That's right, that could make a difference. Well, if they're interested, they should take out nomination papers. They can always not turn them in if they choose not to. I mean, we get this budget done, then we can focus on this. And that may be the four papers I do, I don't know what the due date is, but...
I don't think we should take anything away from it.
And the other thing is, if someone's name is on the ballot, they get elected and they decide not to take it, they're not sworn in, they don't have to, they don't have to take it. All right, so...
All right.
Sorry, I don't, let's just...
I just think it's too much to...
I think we should use one meeting to hash that out.
It's gonna take more than one meeting.
Well, at, at least it's just that at that meeting, and then if we need to do another one, we can. All right, let's move on. Special town meeting, we have to vote again. We have another article to add to the special town meeting. So we have another Article Four. See if the town will vote to approve an additional three thousand dollars to be spent on the backhoe purchase previously approved on December thirtieth, two thousand nineteen, in the amount of a hundred and sixteen thousand five hundred. The additional monies will be taken from the road department's winter budget. The three payments will remain thirty-eight thousand seven hundred thirty-three dollars each. So is there any date? Yep. Let's do the article first, I might get the date, but let's do the article first. I make a motion, we approve that article, that's right. Any discussion? You wanna see it, you also, all in favor?
I'll make a recommendation, select for it, recommend yes.
Respect it. All right, all in favor recommending yes? All right.
What were the payoff amounts?
Thirty-eight thousand seven hundred thirty-three dollars each.
How many years?
Three payments.
Three payments?
I have nothing on my head right now.
Like thirty-seven one?
Thirty-eight, seven thirty-three. It's one sixteen, one ninety-nine.
When was that added?
What do you mean, when was that added?
One sixteen, one ninety-nine? How much is the backhoe?
Yeah, that's not right.
He quit with this article.
And how much you gonna pay him on delivery?
Let me see if I got the...
Yeah, fifty-five thousand two hundred and thirty-three dollars if they already do right now.
Oh, that's right, we approve some money.
Yeah, perishable.
Hold on, let me...
We approve fifty-five thousand, but a little bit more. That, that's now. In June, if it passes, well, it's already passed, in June, it's gonna raise appropriate another thirty-eight thousand dollars. So on delivery, you're gonna give them...
That's right, that's the sixteen.
Ninety thousand dollars.
Yep.
And they were looking for four years out before they get their full money.
They won't give us a deal though? They won't knock any money off?
They won't. Then I would...
I know.
Hold it. I would hold it.
But they giving it for a trade difference?
Eighteen five.
Eighty-five on it?
Eighteen five.
Eighteen five?
When and why was it decided to add that?
Because it went up in price by three thousand.
I thought he was gonna take out of his regular budget.
It is coming out of his regular budget, but we need permission to do it. We're not raising appropriating, and we're not taking it as surplus. It says right in the article to take it out of his winter budget. Yes ma'am?
Is this Article Four on the March twenty-one meeting?
Yes.
Okay, I was thinking it was four.
Yep, now, now, okay.
If not giving you a deal, I would wait and just pay him three payments. First payment won't be until...
Delivery.
No, first payment won't be until a year after delivery. Ain't got any money.
That should be thirty-nine eight, thirty-two. Thirty-nine eight.
Well, forty thousand dollars. A hundred and twenty thousand dollars. Backhoe, three years, forty thousand dollars.
What do you think?
But, but wait, no, but that's, you're gonna take three grand out of our budget, then you only need one sixteen.
Right. So that's right.
But, yeah.
Okay, no, the number, you need a hundred and sixteen five.
Yes.
Thirty-eight thousand eight hundred and thirty-three, 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 keep going.
That's funny, I'm wondering. Why was it down? To do... It's three payments of thirty-eight, seven thirty-three.
There's one sixteen, one ninety-nine. How much do you need?
And he, and he's asking for three thousand, so something is a little off on that.
Right, it's because, what's three, sixteen five, not sixteen one ninety-nine.
Where are you getting sixteen one ninety-nine?
If you take your thirty-seven, seven, eight, that's why he's asking for more money.
That's why he's asking for the additional money.
Right, because it's one nineteen five.
There's three hundred dollars, so it's thirty-three hundred. All I know is what I got. It's gotta be, so he needs nineteen five.
If you look at that article, it says sixteen, sixteen five was appropriated, right?
Yes.
Okay, but when you take those payments, it's only six, one sixteen, one ninety-nine or something like that.
One sixteen, one ninety-nine.
So that calculation's not correct. We're not even coming up to the one sixteen five, that was appropriated.
Unless you go with thirty-three coming out, that's it. All I know is the backhoe is another, it is an additional three thousand dollars on top of the one sixteen five.
Exactly, but when you take that payment, you don't have the sixteen...
I did, I, I understand what you guys are saying, but I know what he's asked for to cover this.
Three thousand dollars.
That's right, so I am not gonna change these numbers again, because then if we're off fifty frickin' cents, then we're stuck.
You're not, you are gonna be stuck, because you're not gonna have enough money to pay for it.
Three hundred bucks.
Right.
Because take thirty-eight, seven thirty-three, it's ten, one sixteen, one nine-nine, okay? Three, yes, all right, and you need...
One sixteen five.
One sixteen five. So add another three thousand to that, so it's one nineteen, one ninety-nine, and you need...
I see what you're saying.
Or short three hundred dollars.
Right.
I see what you're saying.
And I question, I thought he said thirty-three. Well, I messaged him, and I got ahold of him this morning.
And I saw him this morning as well.
Can you take that, tell her to change that to thirty-three? Because we did the backhoe there again, thank you.
So, so my question is, we've appropriated a hundred and sixteen five, I know I'm thick, but help me. Hundred and six, hundred and sixteen five. That's the amount that we voted on. That's not wrong, the amount of the payment is wrong.
Correct.
So it's not that we need to change the three thousand dollars we're asking for. We need to, we, the three thousand is fine, we need to correct that payment, that payment is not correct. To cover the hundred and sixteen five.
What do you want me to do? Seriously, we gotta put this, we gotta fix this tonight, whatever we're doing.
What's the right number? One sixteen? No, no, you need one sixteen, Brad's gonna give you three thousand. You need one sixteen five, divided by three.
There's no interest.
One sixteen, yeah.
No, it's not five, five divided by three. Oh, is thirty-eight, eight, thirty-three, 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 is what I was saying before.
So that's the number you put in there?
Yep.
Three payments of thirty-eight, three, thirty-three, thirty-three, thirty-three.
Thirty, thirty-eight thousand nine hundred to round off those cents to, and don't take care of it.
Go fix it and have it printed out the right frickin' way.
Under.
He's not, yeah, you're three thousand three hundred dollars over what the town allowed him to buy a backhoe for.
That's why we're going back out.
No, we're, you're three thousand, because the amount that was previously approved was one, a hundred and sixteen thousand five hundred. What, the amount is, is a hundred and nineteen thousand five hundred, it's three thousand dollars different.
Oh, okay, he said three thousand three, three hundred.
Well, yeah, with that...
So.
Doesn't matter, it's over what we have allowed him to pay.
Well, it's a different backhoe, right? Yes, he couldn't go with the one he originally said.
Right.
If, if the original vendor hadn't reneged on their contract, we wouldn't be here.
That's right.
But then it should've gone back to the voters, because we only allowed him sixteen five.
If they, they wanted to keep zero percent, they're gonna charge the vendors. Then from there, we get zero percent.
No, because if we don't get to three thousand, then we're gonna default on the loan, and we're still gonna owe the hundred and nineteen thousand that we have to pay him, and we, then we don't have a backhoe, because you default on the loan, you pay it, you don't have any product. So you have to have the three thousand, or you get sued.
What are we, did they put, yeah, I mean, what does the contract say, that, that it has to be taken?
Yeah.
And, and was their money put down?
No.
So that's not on the line to lose, but they can sue, breach of contract.
Yep.
But where you wrote the article...
People know that, they have to know that at the town meeting.
Yes.
Where you go, where you wrote the article to go before the voters. He didn't want...
I am... All right, let's move on to that, and then we've got, I can explain, well, Tammy was here when we did this, so I gave you guys an updated copy of the warrant, and I wrote the date on top. Okay, so Tammy and I were in here on Sunday, working on this, because Debbie had needed us to backtrack, to break out the wages in the social security and everything for her, so when it goes to her, she'll have it. So as we were trying to do that, that's a disaster, when you try to go backwards with this. So, we had Debbie contact the auditor, and what we did was, we changed, we took out the workers' comp, out of the employees, each of those lines, their wages, and we've got that in Article, it's going in Article Eight. Right now, it's in your Article Seven, you're gonna have to handwrite it, because it belongs in Eight. So cross it out to Seven.
Which line, I don't remember.
Memec.
Oh, yeah.
So that's coming out of Seven, and that's gonna adjust the total on that article to seventy thousand nine hundred fifty dollars. Yeah, eleven thousand two hundred sixty-three dollars is moving.
And that brings a total of...
Okay, hold on, so Article Seven's total is seventy thousand nine hundred fifty. So now that's going into Article Eight, so that changes that total to forty-six thousand one hundred sixty-three dollars. And she checked with the auditor to make sure that was all right, and it was actually easier that way. So now on, we won't break that down.
She gets one bill, we know exactly what it is.
That's right.
And it's going, yeah.
So that in turn adjusted all of the articles that have wages involved. So I went through and I've highlighted the articles that we need to make new motions on.
And have they already changed on this one?
Yes. Yep, everything's changed. So we fixed, we fixed all of the wages, and then we also, what else did we do? Just one other thing we changed. Oh, because of our, because of the floors, we had talked about the three thousands of the floors that we didn't add in. We put that, we added that into Article Seven under repairs. We did building maintenance, flash repairs, and added three thousand in there for the floors to be waxed.
So the seventeen three fifty reflects the additional three thousand?
Yes. So those are the things we changed. So we're gonna have to make new motions on all those articles. All right, let's see what this says now. All right, back to the special town meeting. Article Four, to see if the town will vote to approve an additional three thousand to be spent on the backhoe purchase previously approved on December thirtieth, two thousand nineteen, in the amount of a hundred and sixteen five. The additional monies will be taken from the road department's winter budget. The three payments will remain thirty-eight thousand nine hundred. Is that right now?
Thirty-eight thousand nine hundred?
Yeah.
So that's gonna change Article Fourteen.
Thirty-eight thousand nine hundred.
It was forty, then it went to thirty-two, now it's thirty-eight.
Thirty-eight nine.
Thirty-eight nine. Thirty-eight nine.
Actually, it should've been thirty-eight.
Oh, oh my god.
Yeah.
It's so wrong.
Yeah. We wanted to put a couple of dollars on that, it shouldn't have been nine, it should've been, um, eighty, eighty-five. So, yeah, she'll just shoot me.
Should've been eighty-five?
Thirty-eight, eight, thirty-five.
Thirty-eight, eight, thirty-five.
It's like six dollars over, just in case there's five bucks over. Yeah.
Okay, alright, can you get that again?
Yeah, at least she hasn't left yet.
Uh, just wait, cause that's not the right number. I don't know what you said, I mean, what, what is it, thirty-eight, eight, thirty-five? Thirty-eight thousand, eight, thirty-five, times three, is, yes.
That is right.
I put it in wrong. So thirty-eight what?
Eight, thirty-five.
Three, five. Three, thirty-eight, eight, three, five, okay. Okay. Glad we started this budget early. Yeah. Eight, eight, thirty-five. I turned the page, now hold on, yes, thirty-eight, eight, thirty-five. Every, yeah, cause we changed, we took the workers' comp out of it, yeah, anything I've highlighted has to be voted in. I've got it up, I'll show you, yeah.
Cause I would, if I know. Did you correct article three?
Oh shoot, not in there. Oh, article three, well, you, what was wrong with article three?
You were gonna add the rest of the article on there for Bill, that was supposed to be on there?
Rest of the wording. Oh, it's not on this one, no. Two or five dollars.
No, no, no.
Oh. Is it right now, we positive, thirty-eight, eight, thirty-five, alright. I'm not reading that all again. So the three payments will remain thirty-eight, eight, thirty-five, all in favor? Good god, alright. I'll second that, all in favor? Alright, now I make a motion that we hold the meeting on March twenty-first, which is a Saturday at nine AM at Dirigo Elementary School.
We'll second that.
Any discussion? All in favor? It is a Saturday, yes. What time? Nine?
Nine, yeah.
No.
The motion needs to save time. Sandy?
It did, did it? Yeah, I said nine, didn't I? Yeah. So if you ever make a school right, that, yes, yes. Alright, so that's taken care of. Alright, so now we can go through those warrant articles.
Did you already change it correctly?
Yes, yeah. Yeah, it is. I think bills can be looked, looked like, I mean, we better appropriate the money for those air tanks one way or the other, so.
Yeah, but the rest of the article was that if he gets the grant.
Right.
Then you need, if you get the grant, he doesn't need that article, if, uh, he doesn't need the.
So if he doesn't get the grant, the money goes to surplus?
No, that's not the way the article was. The article was, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate twenty-three-one for the purchase of twenty-one self-contained breathing apparatus, air bottles to replace expired bottles pending the assistant to, assistance to firefighters grant awarded. If the grant is awarded, the matching monies will be taken from this article and the balance to the fire department reserve account.
I won't vote for that.
So if he gets the grant, you're gonna have to have another town meeting to get the article, to get the funds for the matching funds.
No, cause the money's been appropriated right there for the self-contained breathing apparatus, right, right Carol?
Yeah, that's how I read it.
That's to purchase them if he doesn't get the grant. It doesn't say anything about if he gets the grant, he needs the matching funds.
Okay, but the money is there for the air packs regardless of grant money or not. The mon, twenty-three thousand one hundred dollars is there for those breathing apparatus bottles regardless of whether there's grant money involved or not. That's what, that's what's, that's what's been appropriated.
But, but when it comes to spending the money for matching funds, you guys will say that's not what the money was raised.
It says right, it says right there, it's for the air bottles, it's laid right out, replaced.
Oh my god, what don't you guys get about this?
It's pretty self-explanatory as far as I'm concerned. It's laid right out.
Well, then he could take the whole twenty-three-one and put it toward air bottles, if he gets the grant, and that's not the case.
Well, what's the grant for? Cause that's what, that's what it tells me right there, that's what it's for.
No, it doesn't.
What is the grant for?
The article number three says nothing about a grant, nothing.
But what is the grant for? The grant is for air bottles, correct?
It is for air bottles, air packs, and gear.
Okay, so. I see what you're saying.
Does it cover the whole twenty-three thousand one hundred dollars to get?
To pay him.
No.
No.
Would be half of that.
I, that's, that was my question, is, if, what is the grant amount, are they gonna match half that amount so that we would still? Are they, is the grant for like eleven thousand dollars?
The grant is for a hundred and eighty thousand dollars.
Right, it's a lot of money, this is just a portion of it.
And I think we, I think our matching amount, Kathy, would be like nine, is that, does that sound right?
Between eight and nine or something like that, yes.
Okay.
You can have that written.
So should we change?
We should.
Absolutely, that's the way he presented it.
I was just thinking that. I just don't know what the hitch, I just don't know what the hitch is.
It's there, we need them, right?
Yes, we need them, they're, I mean, yes, there's no debating that. So I just don't know what the.
So what's the, what's the issue on putting it the way he asked then?
Well, I just, I'm not saying there is an issue, but I'm, I'm saying, what's the issue with leaving it the way it is? What is, what is the way it's written preventing him from doing?
I'm saying that if it comes to he gets the grant.
Yes.
And he wants eight thousand or whatever it is for the matching funds, you guys will say, the article doesn't say anything about using that.
Oh, that, that's, that's garbage.
Oh, no, it's not.
That's garbage. Oh, we, we did already vote on it, yes. Alright, so article two.
Well, wait a minute, cause I have an issue, so, because we did change that article from the way Bill had presented it to us.
Correct.
They want it to go to surplus, not into the reserve account is what it boils down to.
And if the way Bill had written it is he, he doesn't, if he gets the grant.
Yep.
And doesn't have to use it all, then what's left of that will go into his fire equipment.
He's a, right, right.
The way it's written now, it will not.
That's fine, it'll go to surplus.
Okay, I'm just, I just wanna be clear because that wasn't how he presented the article.
I understand that, but we don't have, but that's like holding the balance, and we do that very few times.
Well, there's an article on there that you guys just did for Brad about selling the truck and letting it go to reserve account.
No, the one you just signed. What did I do with that? Oh, you don't have it, oh.
He's already got an increased operating budget, thirty-three thousand, that's three thousand more than last year. I'm not inclined to give it to the fire department for additional money. I mean, the argument for increasing it was that hoses had to be tested, but they've been having to be tested by statute every year, and yet we increased it by thirty, by three thousand dollars.
I did look into that, and it's been done, I believe we were doing it in the house.
That's right.
And now we are not able to do that, so it has to be paid to be done, that's why, that's why that.
Last year was the first year that they paid to have it done, the fire department has done it every other year.
Right.
And it isn't possible to have them do it anymore, so they had to pay to have it done.
Have you seen this?
What is it?
This from the fire department?
No.
I'll show it to you. In the bottom, it talks about grants, an explanation. The last item he just submitted, twenty nineteen grant, on and on. If approved, the rule is match will be about eighty-seven hundred dollars.
Yep.
This match will come out of the twenty-two thousand one hundred dollars.
Yeah, okay, exactly. Okay. So article two, that's the one we need to vote on. And the change in that is we took out the workers', um, yeah, workers' comp, that's, that's the only change. The three thousand had already been added in to the operations of the hose testing.
So how do you want the motion to?
Well, actually, just say article two in the amount, and I'll give Sandy a copy of it so she can look that up.
I make a motion that we accept article two in the amount of fifty thousand nine seventy-five.
Alright, all in favor? I'll second that, all in favor? So the next one is article five, and the change in that is also the workers' comp came out, that's the only change.
I make a motion to be accept article five for fifty-four thousand three fifty-two. I should say the vote for raising appropriate for some fifty-four nine three fifty-two.
What do you think? Alright, I'll second that, all in favor?
I'll make a motion, the board recommends yes to article five.
Alright, I'll second that, all in favor? Alright, article six is the same thing, workers' comp came out of the select persons, out of the secretary. I think Lewis a little bit in planning board too, but it's just workers' comp. I'll make a motion, I'll make a motion to article six to raise an appropriate fifty-seven thousand nine hundred dollars. I'll second that, all in favor? I'll second it, all in favor? Alright, article seven is, that's where, wait a minute, was there a change?
Yep, seventy thousand nine fifty.
Yep.
And make a motion that we raise an appropriate on article seven, seventy thousand nine fifty.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
And article eight is changed as well.
I'll recommend on article seven, the board recommends yes.
Alright, all in favor, I'll second that, all in favor? Alright, article eight, we added the workers' comp into that one. I'll make a motion that we raise an appropriate forty-six thousand one hundred sixty-three dollars for article eight, I'll second it, all in favor?
I'll make a motion, the board recommends yes on article eight.
I'll second that, all in favor? Alright, eleven is, that's again, oh, article, okay, article eleven has the workers' comp out, that Tammy and I added in the health, the difference on the health insurance to bring that up to a full premium for an election, and for an election year. And take somebody different wins who takes the health insurance. So that's the differences in that one.
I'll make a motion that we accept article eleven to raise an appropriate two hundred and forty-four thousand four hundred and fourteen dollars.
I'll second that, all in favor?
And I'll make a motion, the board recommends yes on article eleven.
I'll second that, all in favor? Alright, twelve, I mean, I guess we can, we can wait to see what happens this weekend on that one, uh, on the twenty-first, I mean. But that, but those are the current numbers, that's the, the exact amount of the truck and, and the new payment amounts, cause we went back to the bank to get different financing amounts. Did you double check them? No, I didn't, so I don't know. It's gonna be hard with finance, I think, yeah. But article fourteen we can do. Now that we have the right number. So I'll make a motion for article fourteen, to see if the town will vote to raise an appropriate thirty-eight thousand eight hundred thirty-five dollars for the second of three payments on the new backhoe. Second it, all in favor? I make a motion, the select board recommends yes, I'll second it, all in favor? Alright, article fifteen is the same as the summer budget, the wages, we took out the workers' comp and put in the health insurance, cause it's split. Those are the only changes. Article fifteen, so I make a motion that the town, um, raise an appropriate one hundred and seventy-six thousand five hundred thirty-four dollars in article fifteen.
I'll second that.
All in favor? And make a motion that the select board recommends yes on article fifteen, I'll second that, all in favor? Alright, that's that. And we took off the last article, which was thirty-three about LD-one, because we're not anywhere near to go over it, so we took it off. Okay. Policy. Cheryl, is this the same minus the, yeah, one line? Okay. All right, then, I make a motion that we, um, accept the policy, approve the policy prohibiting tobacco and marijuana use in the town of Peru.
I'll second that.
All right, all in favor? Do you have it there signed? Yep. To make sure the money's lost.
That was what she, she had suggested getting with the papers, so I kept it with it.
Cheryl suggested, so what do you want us to do with the?
Oh, when the policy is, the policy, once a policy is signed, it becomes effective immediately. A copy of this policy, along with that information, needs to go to every employee, um, every elected official within the town. And it is effective tonight, so it needs to be posted, that everyone needs to know that effective now, there's no smoking on town, town property, nowhere.
So will you take care of that tomorrow? All right.
I have a question. John's the one that.
Yeah, guys, we, we still aren't eating.
Martha? With this policy, we no longer need the smoking bucket, do you want that returned to you and to John? Or do you want the town to take care of it?
I'll, I'll ask him.
Okay, you'll get back to us on it. It's, it's stuck in the ice and snow right now.
All right, we have another executive session to go into, I don't have the MRF number, but it's under legal matters, so I make a motion.
Four oh five.
Okay, so I make a motion that we go into executive session. I'll second it. All in favor? Legal matters.
Four oh five.
You gotta hear a little bit more.
No, I know, legal matters.
Well, can we even have public?
Yeah, yeah, we have to. Or I would. If I could get away with not having it, I would, but that ain't happening. So this is the new LD one, I got that.